Welcome to About the Facts Podcast with Brittany and Mike. A podcast designed to educate, navigate, and empower you to become an advocate for your family, yourself, and your community. We uncover the facts and dive into the issues that prevent people like you and me from thriving. You'll gain the tools and the insights to ask the right questions, challenge the system, and stand up for what's right. Get ready to be informed, inspired, and empowered because the power to advocate starts with you. Let's get to it.
It's an amazing day and welcome to another episode of About the Facts. We're so happy to be here and once again, I'm your host, Mike Shelton.
And I am Brittany Grant, so thank you for tuning in. We are just excited about all of our subscribers, everyone who has been sharing our episodes. So if it's your first time here, we are an interview-based podcast where we bring in subject matter experts, politicians, change agents, to just talk about what they would like to see in their community. So if you haven't subscribed with us, please hit that like button, subscribe so you can be alerted every time that we upload an episode. We want you to know about it and share it with your friends.
And we have some great episodes coming up. We'll be talking to people across the nation about many different issues. We've got a episode that we're planning with the National Black Caucus of State Legislators. But it's so important that you understand what our goals are here. Our goals are to educate the community, to help you navigate the different systems, to help you get rights that you need or your family needs. And you may be like me, I don't have money for an attorney. We want to make sure that if you don't have the money for an attorney, or if you do have money for attorney, that you can come here, get the facts on how to navigate those systems so you can be a better advocate for yourself, your family, and your community. And so we're so excited that you've chosen to spend the time, but we do want you to subscribe. We do want you to subscribe. We've been in a very important topic recently and that's our political program, our political elections that are coming up in Oklahoma County area. And it's just been an amazing lesson and education that we've received about the different candidates. And that's what we try to do is really give different insights. You've been in political debates?
Oh yeah, absolutely. So you know, at forums and debates, you only have a timed response, you know, and sometimes you don't get to rebut.
One minute.
One minute, that's it. And they're holding up, you know, the colors, the yellow and red. You gotta stop. And so you feel rushed as a candidate. And so we want All About the Facts to be a platform to where all of our candidates can talk about what they plan to do in the communities in their spot if they are elected. So we're, we're just excited to hear from all of them.
But Brittany was a master debater. So she's got all, she said everything she needed to say in that manner too. No, she was a master debater. But we're so excited again to be here. There's a lot going on, going on in the United States. Of course, there's been conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion, which we'll be talking about very soon. A lot of federal employees concerned about their jobs. We'll be talking about that soon. We have a lot of people talking about the Donald Trump administration and what is, what is next?
It's happening.
Yeah, it's happening. And I got a good friend up in Tulsa. She just happens to be the Chair of the Republican Party of Tulsa that's interested in coming on the show to just talk about her perspective on what's next as far as this administration, how Oklahoma should fare. And so I'm hoping that you all tune in and take part in it. What's going on with you, Brittany?
You know, I'm just excited about what's going on, you know, what's, what's coming up and excited about February 11th. So this is when all of these elections are gonna happen because it's important. It affects our daily lives. So we want to make sure that our voices are heard, that we don't stop the work, that we start.
That's right. And let me make sure that you know, if this is the first one you've tuned into, the first episode you've tuned into, we've already talked to the city council people that are running. We've talked to John Pettis, we've talked to Kamal Pennington, Andrea Holman. We've talked to Masood Hock and all of them were very talented individuals. And what we need to make sure we do is tap into that talent to make sure that they continue to benefit the community. The community getting really benefit from the knowledge that they're getting. We've also talked to the Commissioner, County Commissioner candidates. After Carrie Blument, she departed a little bit early from her seat and we got four new candidates.
Yeah, we do.
We've met with the County Commissioner candidates. We've met with Jason Lo.
We've met with Sarah Vanna. We've also met with Jack Green and Anastasia Pimmin is also a candidate.
Let me just say this, you should go back and check out those episodes because they were very enlightening. Lot of conversation about what's gonna be happening with the jail, what their plans are with the jail. Lot of conversation on dispenser areas. And so we really encourage you to tune in. And it's just so much going on in Oklahoma City. There goes our doorbell and we have a guest coming in. Apparently, let's see who we have. We have Jan Berwick here. She's a Oklahoma City School Board Chair candidate. And we're so happy to have her and we just appreciate you being here and welcome to About the Facts Podcast.
Well, thank you, Mike, for the invitation and Brittany, thank you. And I really appreciate you giving me this opportunity to, like you said, tell my story. Tell why I'm running, tell what I, what my visions are and what my plans are and what my solutions are.
Well, let me just tell you this is that Brittany and I believe wholeheartedly that this election right here, it didn't get the praise that November election gets, but we believe wholeheartedly, it's probably the biggest election on a ballot, period. It needs to get more attention and, and I'm glad to see multiple people running for these positions because often they're overlooked because they don't pay, they don't pay. And, and I know they don't pay because I'm an Oklahoma City School Board member and we'll be working together if your campaign is successful. And so let's just go ahead and jump on right in there and just tell us about who you are, why you decided to run for Oklahoma City School Board Chair.
All right. Well, that's a very good question. The reason that I'm running for the Oklahoma City Chairman, School Board Chairman, is because I have solutions. And all my life, we have heard about the problems in public education. We have talked about, we've heard about why we're number 49th, why we're number 50th. Year after year after year, we hear about the problems, but no one's come up with the solutions until now. And now I have the solution on how to improve the Oklahoma City Public Schools. And that's what I'd like to talk about briefly if that's okay with you guys. Okay, well, first of all, I, I have a master's degree from the University of Oklahoma and my degree's in special education and I'm a certified psychometrist.
But you'll take Cowboys votes too, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Well, I want to know what a psychometrist.
Well, I have hours in, basically a psychometrist can give and interpret IQ tests. And when I was a special education major, students are usually tested to be placed into a special education class or gifted and talented class, not just special, not just students with learning disabilities or special needs, but also gifted and talented. So that's what a psychometrist does, gives and interprets IQ tests.
So don't judge me after this and figure out my IQ.
I promise, you know, Mike, I can tell your IQ without giving you a test. Just saying.
Well, if it has anything to do about the size of the head, mine is top notch.
No, you just, when you do it, when you work with students like I did for a long period of time, you could understand and pretty much understand what their learning disability or their blockage with it, without giving them a test, but technically you have to test them and place them in a, in a class, before you place them, they have to be tested. So that's what, and I didn't really, I wouldn't, I didn't do that very long. I just probably did it long enough to, that you had to do what you had to do to get your degree. So that's what I did, but I never did it for money or anything like that, really.
Okay, sorry I knocked you off your path.
Yeah.
Okay, so the bottom line, I was a special education teacher. And I was working with students that had been identified as having a learning disability. And I knew that these students were smart. I saw their IQ tests. I get it. These kids were, had an average to above average IQ. They were not dumb. They were smart kids. And I would come home from work and my mother would say, well, how did you like your job? How was school today? And I went, I don't know. And then finally around Christmas, she said, well, so how do you like your job? And I said, as a teacher? And I said, well, I don't think I'm cut out for this. And she said, what? When you were in the first grade, you would come home and teach your little sister what you learned that day at school. She could read when she was four. And if you couldn't talk her into being your student, you'd line your dolls up and teach them. So what is going on here? And I said, well, I don't think I'm successful. I'm not successful as a teacher. And so then we started with talking about success in school. And how do you measure success in school? Have you ever had students in, in public schools, Mike?
Absolutely.
So when, when, how did you know as a parent, how your students were doing in school? What was the indicator? What did they bring home every day or every nine weeks that told you that they were successful or not successful in school?
The grade cards.
Their grade card, their report card grade. So if the indicator is grade point average, if that determines success or not success in school, the question then became, can you teach students to make good grades? That became my challenge. All summer, I researched how to improve student grade point averages. And the key is you have to teach them how to study and you have to teach them how to learn and you have to teach them how to be a good test taker. And you have to teach them how to study a chapter in a textbook. And you have to teach them how to take notes in a class. And you have to teach them how to review those notes so that you will score high on the test. So those are all the things I started teaching my students with learning disabilities. And because I was their teacher, I could make sure they did it. And so they did it. And at the end of the year, we had, I had students making the honor roll that were identified as having a learning disability. So that just proves that these kids are smart. And then when you teach them, what you're doing is you're teaching them success. And when you teach kids success, it changes their whole personality, their own, their whole self-image improves. I had one student that said, I said, how do you, one time I was tutoring in a after-school program at Little Axe and the principal said, and I gave money-back guarantees. When I started bringing up students, when I started, my students started making the honor roll, the word got out. And so I started tutoring kids in my kitchen table, dining room table. And I ended up with three learning centers, one in Norman, one in Oklahoma City, and one in Edmond. And so this principal superintendent said, and the reason I had, I think the reason I had so many students, other than the fact that I taught them how to make the honor roll, they had great, great grades, it's got, because I gave a money-back guarantee. If I don't improve your child's grade point average, you don't have to pay me. Well, I had a lot of students.
That's a good deal.
That's a good deal.
That's a good deal.
It was a good deal. It was a good deal for me. I never gave money back. Because I know how to, I know how to improve grade point averages. I had governor's children, I had board of regions children, I had school board members children. So then I was working in a, an inner city school in Roosevelt Middle School. And I was teaching teachers how to teach their students how to study and how to apply it and make, and make, and these students at Roosevelt started making the honor roll, Roosevelt Middle School. And the principal said, if you can bring up grade point averages, then you can bring up test scores. If we go down one more year, we will be on the school improvement list. So your job next year, if you want to work here, I was a consultant, I could go anytime. That will be your job description. So I did the same thing. I started researching how, because if you, if you're graded on, in those days, it was the Iowa Test of Basic Skills. So I researched it and all summer long, and then I applied what I taught, I learned. And we did, we, and Roosevelt Middle School kids had some of the highest test scores in Oklahoma City the next year. So that's when I started working with schools to help improve student proficiency rates. So as we all know, Oklahoma is ranked 49th in the nation in education. Oklahoma City is ranked among the lowest schools in the state of Oklahoma. So Oklahoma City schools are at the bottom of the bottom. So Oklahoma City has some of the lowest performing schools in the state, in the nation. So the challenge becomes, can you take the lowest performing schools in the state and make them proficient and make them successful? And the answer is absolutely you can. So here's what I started doing. When I started, I started my business, my business was to turn around low performing schools. And then that's when House Bill Kids, well, it was when No Child Left Behind banned they did testing. And every child, every state had to write their own standards, write their own objectives and test them, test their students. And then they would rank the, the schools from the highest to the lowest. The bottom 5% were known as the schools in need of improvement. And those schools got a grant, a federal grant to improve their school. And that's the schools that I worked for. So I worked with the bottom 5% of the schools in the state of Oklahoma and I brought up their proficiency rate, their pass rates. I got schools off the school improvement list in one year. My schools would go from an F to a B in one year. I've never taken a school from an F to an A in one year, but I've taken schools from F to Bs in one year. But I always got them off the school improvement list. And I also gave a guarantee. If I don't get you off the school improvement list, you don't have to pay me. And I, I always got paid. I know how to improve proficiency rates on, on, in schools, with the lowest performing schools in the state. And so those are the schools I worked with. Now, these schools were not affluent. You can imagine that these schools proficient, Title I schools, title money is federal money. And that's how they measure poverty in schools. So if it's a Title I school, that means that most of their students are on free and reduced lunch.
Right.
Okay, so my schools had a 76% proficient, a poverty rate. So 76% of my students were on free and reduced lunches. The state average was like 56 or something like that. But, so my schools were not affluent. They were usually, I mean, I worked with schools all over the state, 200 schools all over the state. And every year, we would outperform the state average by at least 10 percentage points. So, so the question is, how did you do it? How, oh, by the way, not only did I bring them up, bring their schools up from Fs to Bs to As, I ended up with four schools, National Blue Ribbon School. The National Blue Ribbon School is the highest status you can have on school improvement. That, the National Blue Ribbon Schools are the best schools in the nation. So four of my schools went from the bottom of the bottom, bottom in the state, bottom schools in the state, to National Blue Ribbon Schools. So that just proves it's not about the students. It's not the stu, when we have failing schools, it's not the students. The students aren't failing. It's the schools that are failing the students. So the challenge becomes, can you improve the schools? And can you teach, basically, can you teach teachers how to improve student proficiency rates? Because we know, we know the bell curve says that the kids in Oklahoma are just as smart as the kids in Pennsylvania. The kids in Oklahoma City are just as smart as the kids in Edmond. The kids at Moon Middle School are just as smart as the kids at Class and School for Advanced Studies. That's called the bell curve. Everybody understands the bell curve. So why do we have schools in Oklahoma City, class in, some of their school grades, their scores are above the state average? And then we have a school down the street whose scores are 3% proficiency, 5% proficiency? Same population, same school district, but drastic differences.
We had, we had kept and mooned in the same building at one time, which was the best school in the nation. And the one the worst at that time.
Absolutely.
But, but there are things that are happening. Let me, let me jump in there real quick if you don't mind. We have, you know, first of all, you really piqued my interest because one of the reasons for this podcast kind of led from, was led from my own personal experiences with special ed and helping my son get the, the IEP services and our, our wish to educate the public how to be their best advocate. So you're, many of these students are only as good as their advocate. And so hopefully we are. So you clearly have lots of education background on, lots of background education. Tell us about the School Board Chair. Can you, can you kind of tell us what the role of a School Board Chair is?
Good question. Okay, so the role of the School Board Chair, the reason I'm running for the School Board Chair, basically is because I know how to improve schools. I have the solution. I've done it. And I, I've spent 36 years improving schools. Now it's time for me to give back. Now I want to give back to the community. It's time for me to be a volunteer because we get paid so much as School Board. So now it's time for me to give back and I know how to do it. And it's gonna take a lot of work and it's gonna take a lot of time and a lot of effort. And because I'm retired, I have that time to spend. I can spend whatever it takes to get the Oklahoma City schools proficient. It can take seven days a week. That's how much I'm working now. We're running for this election. I could do the same thing.
I feel like you have like the secret sauce and there's like some huge secret that I'm sitting right next to for you to be able to fix all of our schools, but it's so exciting to, to kind of hear, you know, you mentioned being out in the community right now, knocking doors. What are you hearing outside?
I'm hearing that schools, that students in Oklahoma graduate from the Oklahoma City schools that can't make change. They work at a cash register and they can't make change. I've heard the other day, a lady, a volunteer was in my office. She had a lady, a girl working with her that could, could not tell time. She had to have a digital clock to tell time. She could not tell time. So we have students graduating from the Oklahoma City Public Schools that cannot read on grade level, that cannot do math on grade level, and that's not necessary. That is not, not even is it not necessary, it's not acceptable. We should not accept anything less than perfection for the, from our schools and for our students. You know, if, and we have, and we cannot have great schools without great teachers. So we have to spend time and money training our teachers. Right now, we have like 600 emergency certified teachers in the Oklahoma City schools, which means they're not certified to teach in the subject or the grade level that they're teaching in. So that means that, it certainly doesn't mean they're not capable. It just means that they have to be retrained. So we need to put money into teacher training, teacher stipends, and teacher recruitment and retention. And we need to figure out how we're gonna pay for that. How are we gonna pay teachers to get stipends for training? Well, maybe we should look at the budget and see how we're spending the money. Right now, Oklahoma City Public Schools, and you, you know the data, you know the statistics. Over the past five years, they always talk about this five-year plan. Over the past five years, our proficiency rates have declined even at Class and School for Advanced Study. I was looking at their proficiency rates. And even over the past five years, they still have good proficiency rates by the state average, but they've declined. So our, our proficiency rate have declined, our student outcomes have declined, our dropout rates have declined. So right now, it is time to choose. Do we want to make a difference? Do we want to stay like, keep doing what we've always done or do we want to make a change? And do we want to make a change for the better? And it's up to the voters. It's time for them to decide.
Well, let's talk about the voters because we have an electorate that's very disenchanted about what's going on across the country, very disenchanted. But, but they should know that there's always winners and losers. For those people that are disenchanted, they turned off their TVs, they say, I'm not gonna vote anymore. It didn't work. We're not included. Our vote doesn't count. What would you tell them about why is it important to vote for this School Board race?
Well, it's important to vote if it's School Board race, if you don't accept failure. If you don't accept, if you accept your students being on a path of failure, then keep doing what you're always done because you're gonna get what you always got. But if you are dissatisfied with our students, like 3% proficiency rate at Martin Luther King, that's not acceptable. So if you're not happy with that, you can make the change. And you can make the change by going out and voting on February the 11th.
Absolutely. What do you see that are some of the biggest challenges in Oklahoma City Public Schools?
Well, you know, they'll say, the reason Oklahoma City Public Schools are low is because our parents are poor. I really get tired of hearing that because everybody knows it just because your daddy's poor doesn't mean you're not smart. So the students in Oklahoma City Public Schools should be on the same proficiency level as the schools in Edmond or the schools at Class and School. We, we should have the same equal education opportunities all across the state, all across the city, in all schools. Not just your charter schools or your, your schools that are designated like John Rex or Class and School for All Students, all schools should be, have a quality education.
So of course, there's been a lot in the news about the State Department of Education. And as a School Board Member, a lot of it's not good and I haven't heard anything good. I'm not trying to lead your question, I understand this, but there's a bunch of scared parents. There's a bunch of scared parents on, you know, should I take my kid to school? There's a bunch of kids that are scared. Should I go to school in fear of my, in fear of immigration, ICE coming into their school? I heard just today about ICE going into some Oakland schools. What would you tell parents to give them the peace of mind, parents and students? Giving them the peace of mind that we'll keep them protected?
Well, I definitely think there's a place to check lawful or unlawful immigration statuses, but it's not in the schools. I definitely don't think that we should have raids, ICE raids in the Oklahoma City Public Schools. It causes disruption. It makes children, students feel unsafe. It's not good for their mental health. So I would not be for ICE raids in the public schools.
Right. And let me just tell you, and just going back to that story in Oakland, the person I know that's an Oakland teacher, her mother lives here in Oklahoma City. The daughter, which is a teacher for second graders, kids were in tears, the teacher's in tears. I said, these teachers gonna have PTSD if they see kids being taken out of the classroom. I mean, there's got to be some repercussion, but I just appreciate you answering that question.
So kind of in your opinion too, like with the new rules of the Department of Education and parents to show proof of citizenship, what is your opinion on that?
Well, it's not my opinion, it's the law. We, we cannot just deny students' education, a free and equal education. So that is not my job as the Chairman of the Oklahoma City School District, or it's not the School Board Member's job. That is not our job to say who is, who can come to school and who can't. We're all, they're all entitled to a good and equal education under the law.
Go ahead.
Whether lawfully or not, they're still entitled to, that's the Constitution. That's what the law says. And so.
And the kids we're teaching had nothing to do.
That kids had, that's right.
Yeah. So there's, again, State Department of Education, Bible. Should, should teachers be forced to teach the Bible or?
Well, that's a very good question. I remember when I was a teacher, I read Bible stories to my students every morning. And I don't think there was ever a rule against having Bibles in the school. I just think it's been more, people are paying more attention to it. And should we use the Bible to teach history? Absolutely. How can you teach American history without talking about freedom of religion? And I think that Bible should be used as a reference. They should be used as a tool to teach history. But I don't think anybody wants anybody teaching the doctrine. And that's, and I, I don't think anybody's for that. But should, should the Bibles be in the classroom? Yeah, absolutely.
Should Korans be in the classroom?
Should Korans be? Good question.
I mean, I'm just saying, if, I mean, we are.
Okay, let me just give you, let me, that's a good question. Okay. Okay, I'm glad you asked that question because that reminds me, when I was in Sunday School, I was a junior in the first, a junior Sunday School. And my teacher, my Sunday School teacher taught us about different religions and different, and that was one of the most memorable things that I, that I can remember about going to Sunday School. It's learning about different religions. So I don't think that's, I think it's appropriate to talk about different religions in, in the public school. I remember that. I, and you, I don't remember everything about Sunday School when I was growing up, but I remember when my Sunday School talked about, taught us about different religions and that made an impression on me.
Tell us about charter schools. In your opinion, we live in this environment of parent choice. So where, where do you stand?
Charter schools. I remember the debate when we started charter schools and I remember my opinion. And I, I remember thinking, charter schools, are we going to give money to schools that are not public schools? Well, they're public schools, but other schools that don't have to have the same regulations? And then I started thinking, hmm. In those, in those days, the Oklahoma City Public Schools were still failing their students in those days. And they're still failing their students. And they're still failing their students. So if I were a parent and I had a choice to send my child to a failing school or to a non-failing school, which one would I choose? I would choose a good school over a failing school. So, so charter schools introduce, this is the most important thing they introduce. They introduce competition, competition into the formula. And when you introduce competition into the formula, you're gonna have a better product and a less expensive product. Now, let's just take this one step further. We have lost thousands and thousa- we, we, in the last po- five years, we have lost half of the popu- we, we started out losing like six hundred students a year, six, fi- uh, five years ago. Now we're doubled that. We're losing like thirteen, a thousand students a, a year. So my goal is to bring those students back. How are we gonna get those students that went to charter schools back into the Oklahoma City Public Schools? It's real simple. You beat them. You beat them. My, when I'm the chairman of the board, the Oklahoma City Public Schools will outperform the charter schools. We will be better schools than the charter schools. And that's when we'll start seeing students returning to the Oklahoma City Public Schools.
Alright, so the Spencer area often feels left out or overlooked. So how would you combat them not feeling like they're just, you know, left out to dry out there?
Well, Spencer is a very interesting community. And I have to tell you, I've been at Spencer before. I have had my program at Spencer before. Now I want you to ask the, the principal and the teachers how, how uh, the schools performed when they used my program, my methods. And, and we improved their schools. We improved, we improved Rogers Middle School. I saw, I ran into the principal the other day at Rogers when I was there. Jan, remember when we took Rogers from an F to a C? Uh, and I certainly do. Would you mind saying, putting that on my, on my uh, And so, uh, we, we can turn around Spencer Public Schools. We've done it before and we do it again. Here's the problem. When I was at Spencer in any school, whether it was Spencer's, Rogers, Roosevelt, I had to compete with the other programs that they brought in. They brought in these out-of-state companies and we would spend like, you pay attention. We would spend one point five million dollars to these out-of-state. The expert, they have to be two hundred miles away. That's why I'm not an expert. So, and then they would, uh, and the scores would go down. And they would say, you can ta- you can take Jan's test, but you also have to take their, our test. So the students were tested to death and they were not, see, the key is you have to teach the students what will be tested or what will be measured. And that's the Oklahoma academic standards. National companies are not gonna write textbooks to the Oklahoma academic standards because the profit margin is too low. And so, but I did, I wrote curriculum to the Oklahoma academic standards and assessments. And that's how, that's the trick. You have to teach the students what will be tested.
Right. Let me uh, ask you a question. One of the top uh, issues in s- many of our schools, and not only in Oklahoma, but across the country, is chronic absenteeism. So my question to you is, how can we improve it? How can we improve involvement from the parents?
Okay, excellent question. The answer to chronic absenteeism starts in the classroom. The classroom teacher is the key to improving absenteeism, not at the board, not at the ch- school board. The key is at the classroom. So we have to train our teachers how to encourage students to come to school. And it's not hard. It's called positive reinforcement. You, you reward children, students for coming to school, and, and there's all kinds of ways to do it. The answer to the absentee, the problem of absenteeism begins with the class, in the classroom, with the classroom teacher. And that's why we need training. That's part of, of the training that I will implement when I'm chairman.
So, go ahead. Well, I, I was just, uh, you have any serious questions?
I don't have a follow-up.
Okay, well, let me just say this and I apologize. I was just gonna say, why don't you just kinda wrap up today with, just take a couple minutes, just tell people why they should vote for Jan Barrett. And in that, also tell how to get in touch with you and how to be connected with you.
Okay, alright. First of all, again, I would like to thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. And on February the eleventh, the voters have a choice. They can choose to stay the course. They can choose to do what they've always done, and knowing that they'll get what they always got. Or you can choose to make a difference. You can choose to change. And I guarantee you, you know that I am the only person running for this position that has a solution. We know what the incumbent has done, and if we keep doing the same thing, we're gonna get the same thing we always got. So you know that I am the only person on this, running for this job that has a solution to the problem. So this is not a campaign promise, this is a guarantee. If you elect me as the chairman of the Oklahoma City School Board, we will have excellent schools. We will have, we will have great schools, we will have great teachers. You can't have great schools without great teachers. And that's, that is my guarantee to you, the voter, when I'm elected as the chairman of the Oklahoma City Public Schools.
You mean, you're gonna give the high-paid, high-paid salary back to the people?
I am gonna give you that five dollars of, of, I think they get five dollars a school board meeting, right?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars. I'll give it back to you. Twenty-five dollars.
You heard it here, Jan has the secret sauce, um, to this. Um, so thank you for coming in, Jan.
How do they get in touch with you?
Oh, Jan Barrett, Jan Barrett, and For Kids, For F O R Kids. That's my website. Visit my website, janforkids.com, and vote on February the eleventh for Jan Barrett.
Beautiful. So we will tag her socials on all of our social media pages. Remember to subscribe on our YouTube podcast. We are also streaming on Spotify. So subscribe, hit that uh, subscribe button, and you will get uh, updates on every time we upload an episode. Mike, you good?
I'm good, Jan. We appreciate you being here. It's been awesome. Oh, absolutely. And we're just so excited that you joined us again. Please share it again with your friends and make sure that people go out and vote.
February eleventh.
And remember that this is an amazing day.
Let's go make the best of it.